Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's special committee of the whole meeting. This meeting is called to order. The chair recognizes that all the council members are present with three council members joining us remotely, Alderman Mayor, Alderman Maladra, and Alderman Bruno. Folks, before we begin our business tonight, and there is only one item of business tonight, I do want to share with the council on the off chance you're not aware, and I ask for your indulgence as we pay tribute, if you will, to these employees and their families. Last week, the Public Works Department, two of our professional staff, James Miranda, who works for the electric department, lost his mom. And Steve Smith, who works for our streets department, lost his father. So our friends at the Public Works Department have been hit hard with some sad news. And I would hope that we could all just, for a moment, all for a moment of silence to let Steve and Jim know that we're thinking about them and their families. And I would appreciate it very much. Thank you very much. And of course, on a high note, to our friends in Public Works, again, excellent job on the snow removal. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Where is it? Nate? Well done, man. You look tired.
I'm tired, and so are my guys.
I bet they are, man. Did you do what we normally do, just dump it all in St. Charles?
Yeah, we push it all in the north.
That's good. Ladies and gentlemen, under item 2A, we have a presentation and discussion regarding the fiscal year 2023 budget and fiscal year 2024 budget projections. The presentation will be led by City Administrator Dawkins, and all of you will note, and those joining us remotely, not certain if you can see, but all our department heads and other essential, all of our staff are essential, city staff are with us as well, including Mr. Nelson, obviously, Mr. Landers, who else is back there? Mr. Van Gescam, good God, Aaron Holton, life is good, man. Good to see you guys. With that, Stephanie?
Okay.
It's all yours.
One moment. Okay. We are set. So as usual, tonight's presentation is meant to be an overview of the recommended 2023 budget and a preview of the fiscal year 24 budget. We recognize that there is a lot of information to digest, but we wanted to give you some context to go with the numbers that were in tonight's agenda packet. I do respectfully request that we keep questions until the end of the presentation, and there are, there will be time at the end to ask questions, and also, we have time built into the schedule at a later date to ask more in-depth questions if you have them. Computer's slow today. So I always like to start with just talking about what a budget is. It's a good practice to start to the basics, not just for you all, but for anybody who may be watching who is unfamiliar with the municipal budget. As many of you have heard me state previously, a budget is a plan of expenditures balanced by revenues for a given period of time. In our case, that period of time is a fiscal year, May 1 to April 30. The municipal budget requires fund accounting, which means that each individual budget stands on its own with the revenues contained therein. In addition, we are required to have a balanced budget. So our anticipated expenditures must be less than or equal to the anticipated revenues, which also includes any authorized use of fund balance. There are various roles and responsibilities associated with the creation, preparation, and adoption of the budget. The slide before you outlines those various roles. The city council has the sole authority by a majority vote to adopt the annual budget. City staff in our various roles recommend a budget based upon the principles identified earlier, the council's strategic priorities as outlined at our November workshop, and the general operational needs of any given department. But ultimately, it is you, the council, that have the final say on what is included or excluded. In addition, as the budget is a plan, things happen. Therefore, the city council also has the authority to amend a budget by a two-thirds Many often mistakenly believe that the budget is a forecast of the amount the local government expects to spend. While that may be true, the reality is that the budget is the maximum amount that it is allowed to be spent, obviously, again, absent any amendment. As such, many times at the end of the fiscal year, the expenditures may be, may appear to be below budget. This is by design. It is not that the budget is padded, but rather that we have stayed within the budgeted plan of expenditures. The city council should be proud of the work that they have accomplished over the past several years. The city is on solid financial footing based upon decisions and actions taken by this council. This is evidenced by a rerating from Moody's this past fall, reaffirming the city's AA2 rating, and the Government Finance Officers Association recognizing the city's efforts in budgeting and financial reporting. You'll notice that the numbers in parentheses, that's the number of consecutive years that we have received those awards. The general fund projections based upon year-end estimates and the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget indicates that the city will maintain a fund balance exceeding the goal of at least 90 days' operating expenditures in compliance with the city's financial policies. This is the result of the city council making a concerted effort following the Great Recession to position the city with the resources to provide the flexibility to meet unexpected costs and position the city to take advantage of unexpected opportunities. And I think all of us can agree, over the last three years, we may have had a lot of those unexpecteds, be it good or bad. In addition, the city is now in a position to make investments in capital equipment and infrastructure that has been deferred for several years. All news, however, is not positive. The most recent consumer price index for all items was 7% in December 2021. The CPI is a measure of the average change over time in the prices paid by urban consumers for a market basket of consumer goods and services. The CPI is most widely used to measure inflation and is often used as a guide to make economic decisions. In sum, goods and services cost more today than they did previously. This has had a direct influence and impact on the city's budget. In the slide there, you probably can't see it, but this is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics showing the CPI since December of 2001 all the way through December of 2021. Even with inflation and reduced purchasing power, the city is well positioned due to prudent planning and strategic thinking. The city council annually participates in a strategic planning workshop designed to look not only at the upcoming fiscal year, but beyond. The recommended budget presented this evening represents three core principles. It maintains the city's solid financial position, it maintains core city services, and at the same time is forward-thinking. As department heads and other supervisory staff began the budgeting submittal process, they kept in mind the strategic plan priorities identified by the city council at the November workshop. Projects and operations that supported these items were given priority. You will note a reference to the strategic plan as you review departmental goals, which are on page 102 of tonight's agenda packet. I will also provide an overview this evening of the three major funds, the general fund, the electric fund, and the water and wastewater fund. In addition, I will provide some brief commentary regarding the other funds. Lastly, all of the information presented this evening and included in the packet is in draft form. This provides the opportunity for further refinement and/or additions prior to the anticipated adoption on February 7, 2022. In addition, we have set aside next Monday, January 31, for additional discussion and review if desired by the city council. So we'll start with the general fund. This slide provides a summary of that fund. Revenues are budgeted at an amount 5.4% more than was, than what was budgeted for fiscal year 2022. This includes the use of $500,000 from fund balance. While we tend to compare budget to budget, it may be valuable to note that projected revenues are currently trending above budgeted. Operations, which includes personnel, contractual, and commodity expenses, are budgeted to increase 4% over the current year. Transfers from the general fund to other funds also increases nearly 27%, including the $500,000 to General Capital Projects Fund and another $800,000 to the Capital Equipment Fund. I will discuss these funds a little later in the presentation. The general fund derives the majority of its revenues from three major sources: property tax, sales tax, which includes non-home rule sales tax, and state income tax. This slide indicates how the property tax is calculated and what portion of that tax comes back to the city. Things to note, the city's property tax rate has decreased again for the sixth consecutive year. This is primarily due to an increase in the equalized assessed valuation and no debt attributed to the general fund. With the property tax levy that the city council approved in December, it is estimated that a home with a market value of $350,000 will pay approximately $50 per month or $600 annually to the city in property taxes. I want to briefly talk just a little bit about the debt service. So as I mentioned, the final debt payments for the general fund were made this fiscal year, and so this shows the city's debt payments over the past several years. With there being no further debt attributed to the general fund, the debt service fund has now been closed out. So in previous years, you would have seen a separate budgeted fund called debt service fund. You will not see that this year because it is at zero and has been closed. But back to property tax and the services received for that. So $600 annually in property taxes. A resident receives the services indicated on the right side of the slide. I would argue, this is the best value you get for your dollar. However, it costs far more to provide these services than the revenue provided from property taxes. So where does that remaining revenue funding come from? The chart on the left identifies where the revenue comes from, and the chart on the right identifies the expenditures. Property taxes equate to approximately 27% of the general fund revenues. That's that kind of bright green color up in the top right corner of the left-side pie chart. The same color slice on the right, which is expenditures, is the operating budget of the fire department. As you can see, the operations of the fire department equate to approximately the same dollar amount received in property taxes. But yet, property taxpayers received far more services than just fire services. That's where sales tax, state income tax, permitting, licensing, and other fees come in. It is through this varied revenue stream that the general operations of the city are The fiscal year 2023 budget includes personnel changes, including a recommendation to eliminate an intern position in the community development department and add the position of assistant city planner. The community development department has seen demands on the department grow exponentially over the past couple of years, making it difficult to complete department goals, code updates, long-range planning projects, and general policy discussions on topics requested by the city council. The addition of a full-time assistant city planner will provide the department with the opportunity to further evaluate roles and responsibilities, streamline processes, complete lingering projects, and cross-train for coverage and succession planning. The fiscal year 23 budget also includes the addition of a full-time firefighter as negotiated in the collective bargaining agreement. From an operational perspective, there are several new initiatives that are contemplated to occur during fiscal year 23. Some projects require additional funding, while most staff, most are staff time only. A couple of examples are outlined on the slide along with the priority strategic goal that they represent. So you can see up there, there's some long-range planning, some software to help improve processes, looking at opportunities to replace vehicles with electric vehicles, and, and the like. As indicated in the general fund summary slide, the fiscal year 23 budget includes $1.3 million in transfers to other funds. Funding for the Cultural Arts Commission and Beautification Committee are consistent with funding provided this current year. This is due to the inability to conduct their own fundraising activities as limited by statute. The transfer to SPAC is to continue to support the strategic planning process, and transfers to both general capital projects and capital equipment are to support the requirements of those funds as they have no dedicated revenue source, as compared to the infrastructure capital fund that is funded by a half percent non-home rule sales tax. The general capital budget totals $1.2 million for fiscal year 23. Included are facility building repairs and improvements. I should note that these are projects that would be required regardless of what may happen with facilities planning in the future. In addition, there is a funding request for an update to the Garden Club Park. This was initiated by a request from the Geneva Park District in conjunction with the Garden Club. The Geneva Park District maintains the park under an IGA with the city. They would like to invest a little more than $300,000 in redoing and reimagining the park. The request for the city was to provide 50% funding. Also included is a downtown market study that was originally programmed for the tourism fund for fiscal year 20, but was deferred due to COVID. It is now programmed in the general capital projects fund. The existing market study was completed 15 years ago, and the purpose of a new study is to provide an analysis of downtown visitor market to inform tourism, marketing expenditures, and destination business recruitment strategies. The capital equipment budget totals $2.5 million for fiscal year 23. We have been experiencing long lead times on acquiring vehicles and equipment, so there is some uncertainty as to what may actually be acquired during this fiscal year and the next. We have also requested funding for a remote brush mower that will be used to mow many of the detention ponds that are difficult to access with regular equipment. As with the previous slides, you will note that these expenditures that relate directly to the city's council's stated strategic plan priorities for fiscal 23 are noted on For fiscal 23, neither the electric nor the water and wastewater utilities are proposing rate adjustments. However, I would note that there is a likelihood that such adjustments may be required in the future. Similar to the general fund slide, this slide represents revenues on the left and expenditures on the right. The majority of revenue for the electric fund is derived from the sale of electricity, much like the majority of expenditures is related to the administration, operations, and maintenance of the utility. So again, those two pie pieces you can see are similarly sized. In the electric division, planning for the design and infrastructure for the Southeast Area Master Plan will continue with anticipated expenditures by way of a bond issuance for a substation and related feeders. In addition, underground cable upgrades continue. And you can see there's a few, I gave you some highlights of what was accomplished in calendar year 21, and then a couple of the other capital projects that are under I would also note, we did also receive a grant for some of that infrastructure improvements. Again, looking at the water and wastewater fund, the pie chart on the left is related to revenue, and the pie chart on the right is related to expenditures. Similar to electric, the majority of revenue is derived from water and sewer sales, and the majority of expenditures is related to the production, treatment, distribution, and collection of water and wastewater. In the water and wastewater division, capital expenditures related to the design of a second sanitary sewer river crossing and the cleaning and replacement of the spotlight for the Logan Water Tower are included in the fiscal year 23 proposed budget, along with various other projects relating to the wastewater treatment plant, water main projects, and vehicle equipment, and purchases. The remaining funds that comprise the city's total budget are summarized on this slide and total $23.2 million. Miscellaneous funds include SSAs, pension funds, workers' compensation, and the like. As you can see, we have 36 various funds. Some highlights from the miscellaneous fund budgets are outlined on this slide along with the strategic plan priority association. Funding for the Geneva History Museum has been included as directed by the city council from hotel motel tax revenues. It should be noted, however, that the fund balance at the end of fiscal year 23 is estimated to be below the city's fund balance policy of 25%. This is something that will need to be reviewed and/or addressed during the fiscal year 24 budget process. As everyone is aware, the hotel motel industry was hard-hit during the pandemic, as were the city's revenues for this fund. The East State Street Road Construction Project right-of-way acquisition is expected to be in full swing during fiscal year 2023. But of course, as you know, anything can happen, but we are, we are moving forward still on that project, so don't give up hope yet. The city is a recipient of the American Rescue Plan Act funding from the federal government. A total of $2.9 million will be received in two tranches. The first was received in September, and the second will come no sooner than September of this year. The final rules governing how these funds may be spent was just released on January 6 of this year. As such, this budget only reflects minimally the revenue from this funding. $700,000 has been programmed in the infrastructure capital projects fund for citywide storm drainage improvement projects. As discussed with the city council at strategic planning, the remaining funding is anticipated to be used towards lead line replacement, facility improvements, and reinvestment in the downtown area. As noted, as long as the funds are budgeted by December 31, 2024, and expended by December 31, 2026, there is time to ensure sound fiscal planning for the use of these funds. In all, the city budgets 36 separate funds. When taken as a whole, the entire city's budget increased 9.2% from fiscal year 2022. This is primarily the result of an increase in capital spending, deferred and/or delayed projects. The general fund is budgeted to increase 5.4%, less than the CPI of 7% that was discussed earlier. The fiscal year 2024 forecast is currently estimated to decrease, again, primarily due to a reduction in capital expenditures. Although given some of the continued delays in supplies and equipment, many projects may carry over to 2024 from 2023. In summary, the budget is a planning document. It outlines the anticipated maximum expenditures. The budget presented to you this evening is a balanced budget, where all funds, all funds, and all funds expenditures are less than or equal to anticipated revenue, including the use of fund balance where appropriate. The city's financial position, due to our continued responsible approach to budgeting and forecasts, is anticipated to remain stable throughout the current fiscal year and then upon conclusion of fiscal year 2023. I would like to close out this presentation by thanking those who helped put this budget together for your consideration. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank our senior management team and their respective staffs, most of who are here this evening, for working together to put together a fiscally sound budget for your review and consideration. Through the efforts of all, we are able to present to you a balanced budget that represents the values stated in the strategic plan and best serves the citizens of this community. The recommended budget as presented this evening is available to the public on the city's website. In addition, we have set aside, as I mentioned, next Monday for a special committee of the whole to provide the city council with additional time for discussion and review if desired. And lastly, a public hearing has been published for February 7 at the beginning of the city council meeting, and the city council will be asked to consider and improve a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget that same evening. I recognize that a lot of information was presented this evening and in the packet. I encourage you to take some time to review the information. It is our intent tomorrow to send you all the actual Excel spreadsheets and also variance reports that should help assist in your review of the budget. Department heads and supervisors are all present this evening, and they're happy to entertain any questions you may have. In addition, as we have done in the past, I would encourage the city council to submit any questions in writing to me. Questions submitted by noon each Friday will be posted with the responses to the city's website the following Monday afternoon. I again thank you for your time this evening, your leadership and support throughout this past year, and now I will return it, the floor to the mayor, and he can entertain any questions the council might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, there is no action being taken tonight, but we do encourage and welcome all discussion, debate, and questions. So Alderman Swanson, sir?
Thank you.
My microphone on? Good question. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to clarify my position on the Geneva History Museum, given that I have been a former board member and former president of the board, and my wife currently is on the board of the Geneva History Museum. I wanted to state that I have, my wife and I have no financial interest in the Geneva History Museum. We will not benefit in any way financially if the city does fund any portion of their finances, and my interest in this matter is to provide the greatest benefit to the city of Geneva. I would not vote or talk about this issue if I thought I could not objectively and fairly undertake my obligations to Geneva, and I'm confident that I'm looking at this matter solely through the lens of my council duties. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the floor is open for anyone joining us remotely. I'll defer to you first, Alderman Mayor, Maladra, or Bruno. Any questions or comments? Observations? Alderman Maladra, sir?
Yeah, I just would like to ask, Stephanie, when you send the spreadsheets, can you send the PowerPoint deck as well?
Yes, I should have mentioned that, too. The PowerPoint will also be posted on the city's website tomorrow morning, but I can also send you a copy.
Either way, that's good. Thanks.
Alderman Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Stephanie. I'm always impressed and thankful that we have, have the staff we have, led by you for this, for this effort. But to the point of the history museum that we discussed not long ago, I didn't find details in there, in the, I don't know exactly how much was put in there. I believe our discussion was, was it 40,000?
So we, the, as I took it, the direction from the council was to do one-fifth of the anticipated revenues, so that would be 20%, and we're anticipating $255,000, so that's $51,000 that has been budgeted. Again, keep in mind, though, we only pay that as the revenues, you know, if the revenues come in, so it's not like we cut a check May 1 for $51,000. We have to actually have revenues to support that, that expenditure.
God, I just couldn't remember the precise metrics on that. But again, thank you, and thank you to all the staff for, for all the work that goes into this.
Alderman Mayor?
Yeah, Stephanie, can you explain what you were saying about the 25% balance in that fund? I didn't quite follow what that was about.
Sure. Several years ago, the city council adopted financial policies, and in those policies, it says that we will strive, again, it's not a hard set number, but we will strive to maintain a 25% fund balance in our funds. There's a couple exceptions, mostly in the utilities, but all other funds, we look to have 25%. So at the end of this coming fiscal year 2023, once we conclude with all revenues and expenditures, that fund balance amount is going to drop, is estimated to 19.5%. So it's just a note that it's going below that, that anticipated or that recommended fund balance of 25%. And again, that's all estimated based on estimated revenues and based on estimated expenditures.
Okay.
Alderman Marx? Stephanie, you might not have this answer, but, you know, last year, we did a forecast for this year's budget. How close was it to, are we pretty much where we thought we'd be here, or?
So if you...
That was, I didn't see that in here, but there was a lot to go through.
So, I mean, if you came last year, you're talking to me a little closer than you...
No, well, when we looked at the budget that we were currently in now, we also forecasted this year's.
Right.
Is...
Yeah, I have to pull it out.
Yeah, I just wondered how close we are with those forecasts, because, I mean, I know you spend a lot of time on those, too.
What I would say is, on some of the operational and contractual and those things, we're usually pretty close.
Microphone, please.
Oh. On the, sorry. On some of the, like, operational and contractual, we're usually pretty close. pretty close unless there's a huge change, which, like, we saw this year, there was a huge change in our lawn service maintenance contract. Where you'll see the biggest difference is in our capital projects. Because we don't always know what's coming or what's needed, and so, and I can, I can tell you, in fact, looking at 2024, capital equipment, there's a lot lacking that will likely be budgeted for 2024, but part of that is, again, we don't know what the supply chain is doing and, and kind of how this current year we're in is going to shape up to help-
That was my next question.
To help view what happens two years hence.
Do we know how much of this year's is going to have to bleed over? I mean, that we're just going to carry over?
We, we are still keeping fingers crossed that we will have some things delivered.
Okay.
But quite frankly, I, I think everybody is maybe as tired as hearing it about, as I am, but supply chain, lack of labor, I just participated in a financial forecast, and it's the same things we've been hearing, and unfortunately, we have no control, and we've also been, there's been times where they'll call us and say, we have a vehicle now. We need a check, come get it. So.
Maybe this is for, for Mr. Babica, but we've got a brush mower in there for, for, isn't that mostly outsourced, though, to, by the SSAs for another, for an outside company to do all that?
So I'm actually going to let Nate address this, because this is, this is, I'll give credit, this is Nate's brainchild.
Okay.
It's really pretty cool, actually.
That's fine. It just, it kind of stuck out, because normally we outsource that, that's why I was asking.
I've got some great video I can, I can show you.
Okay.
It's actually a very cool, very cool tool. So we have some ponds in the, in the SSAs that unfortunately don't-
I know, one right by fire station, too.
Well, yes, there's one, yes, absolutely. There's, that's a great example of it, where, you know, we have cattails, water sitting down on the bottom of it. Conventional mowers can't fit in it. We've rented brush mowers through the years. Typically, we do it twice a year to, to get into those areas and cut that, cut those areas down. This particular mower only has about two pounds of ground force, so it's actually less than me standing here right now, or you sitting there even. So it floats right through it, and this would then be, if we were to purchase it and we do go forward with it, we would do it on a monthly basis and help keep those cattails and stuff down. West Street has a huge issue there. That pond is a disaster, for lack of a better term. We rented that mower earlier this summer and had multiple residents out cheering us on, taking videos of it, clapping. We're very thankful that we were actually trying to do something to get in there. Absolutely, and as we start to claim some of that-
And I would point out, it's a remote controlled mower.
Yes, it is.
So it also helps protect our, our personnel from having to be in those kind of treacherous situations. It's completely remote controlled.
So our staff will be running that?
Our, our staff would be running it. We also have spaces for Aaron. He's got the, some, some areas that have some heavy brush that they try to get through. It just doesn't work very well with the other brush mowers, standard brush mowers.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, sir? Alderwoman Burghardt?
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, thanks for the great presentation. I heard about an assisted city planner, so that would be a new position, right?
Correct.
And, and then the new firefighter that's under the contract. And would the facilities manager be new to this budget that we're talking about, or is?
Well, it, it was authorized to be filled the current year, so it will continue into this, the fiscal year 2023. So the numbers that you see include all of those dollars.
And so, are those, those are the three new positions, or two new positions and one we've already?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. Could we hear some about the assistant city planner and the, a little bit more about the need for that?
Sure, I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna let David-
Sure.
-come up and talk about it a little bit.
Sure. Good evening. Um, where would you like to start?
Well, I know your department's been very busy for a few years now, and so-
Right.
If you could tell us about what, why that role is needed and, you know, how, how it would help-
Sure.
...provide better customer service.
So just this, this fiscal year we're in right now, we are about double what we typically have for planning and zoning commission applications. So that has made it really hard to kind of do any kind of special projects, policy discussions, code updates, long-range plan updates, which are really necessary. We have several parts of the city code that haven't been touched in 20 years. We have plans that are getting along in the tooth, too, that really need to be updated. One of the goals for next year is to have a policy discussion with the council on those plans and prioritize which ones need to be updated, but we really don't have the manpower with the current workload we have to, to do any of those special projects. For the past, I think we're in year 11 of having a part-time intern kind of fulfill those duties. In the, in the planning division, we don't have an administrative assistance. We rely, rely on the intern pretty heavily for invoices and helping us out with research and stuffing envelopes and mailers and all of that kind of stuff. And, you know, with an intern, we've gotten good work out of them. I don't want to discredit any of the interns we have had, but there's an onboarding process. You know, many of them come to us without any kind of background in planning or zoning, so there's kind of a learning curve there. They're restricted to 20 to 24 hours a week, and their schedule changes every eight weeks. So every time we feel like we get in agree with them with certain tasks that we rely on, on a weekly basis or monthly basis, that changes. And then, of course, when they graduate, that's in May, which is peak construction season for us and really kind of drains the department. You know, it's, it's a two-year program through NIU, which is great. It's about as long of an internship as you could get, but right when we think we've really got them up and running, it's time to start the hiring process all over again. So we thought by eliminating that position and going for like an entry-level assistant city planner, we might be able to get some more longevity, somebody with some planning background that doesn't take as long to onboard, and that could really help us out with some of these special projects and kind of keep them moving.
So that was my question, was that, would that be somebody at the, near the beginning of their career, assistant city planner would be?
Yeah, it'd be at least a bachelor's degree, hopefully some internship experience at least, or one or one to three years professional experience, but it would be that entry-level planner position.
And would that person be able to handle more of the day-to-day work so that perhaps that, you know, Chayton could handle some of the deeper dives, or?
That would be the, the idea, they can handle some of the zoning inquiries we get on a routine basis, they can help us with some of the easier applications we get through, checking applications for completeness, processing FOIA requests, doing some of those day-to-day tasks like invoice payables, updating the content on the website, and then just kind of cross-training them between historic preservation and planning so they can serve as a number two in the, in the event that somebody's on vacation or out on medical leave or something. And then succession planning as well. We figure some of them may be moving on eventually. It'd be good to have somebody that kind of be able to step up if needed.
Very good. Thank you. That takes care of me on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Kilberg?
For David, while you're up there, how did the economics look on that? What were we paying an intern for those 20 to 24 hours? Are we looking at about doubling the expenditure?
I think I might need some help from Ben on the exact difference, but the internship, I think, is, is about $18,000 a year that we budget for that position, so.
So entry level, we'd be looking at what, 60, something like that, maybe, or more?
Probably high 60s.
Okay.
With, with benefits and everything, you're looking at, the general fund impact is about $50,000, give or take. The intern all came out of the general fund, an assistant city planner would come out of several funds, so you would, the general fund impact-
Spread around.
Yeah, would be 54, and then it would also hit the electric and water funds as well.
Okay, good. Thanks, David. You're welcome. I, I had another question, and it was, okay, Public Works, first of all. Obviously, labor is a big issue right now, finding replacements for the workforce. I know Public Works is probably our most, most of our employees, or a large percentage of our employees are Public Works. How, how are we situated as we look at 2022? Are we short in any areas? How's the hiring process going when we need to replace someone? And I know that's over a variety of different skill sets, but maybe you might be just prepared to comment on that if you wouldn't mind?
Welcome, Mr. Babica. It should be noted, and I believe Mr. Babica and Mr. Marks might share the same birthday, last February, or excuse me, February, January 21st, correct?
That's correct, and Mr. Pre also.
20th year, 20th, okay. And who else?
Tim Pre.
Holy, that's right. Good lord.
January's a good month for birthdays in Public Works. Today is Dan Dobnik's birthday. I'm sure he's watching somewhere up in the U.P.
I'm sure he-
While he's rehabilitating at the local corner establishment.
Yes, indeed. Enjoying his cake.
So Public Works has a number of current vacancies within the positions, probably most notably, which we're, we're working with, Administrative Services is filling Barb Nicoleoff's position who retired in January. So that is a position that we're going through the final stages, getting ready to that post. There is an opening within the street division from a voluntary separation, and then there's also an opening within the, there's a lineman position that's open, and that is one, we're kind of, we're holding to rotate through an apprentice that's going to be earning his journeyman card here in April. So, so we have three vacant, three open positions right now.
Okay, so, and the, the total number of employees under your supervision, I mean, what would that come at approximately?
It's 57 full-time equivalents, including myself.
So, uh, what would be your assessment as it relates to filling these positions? Is it anything out of the ordinary right now? Are you getting applicants? How do you feel about filling those positions in the upcoming year?
Well, we had two vacancies that, within the underground utility division, both through voluntary separations, and we had, I believe, nine solid candidates that were interviewed for the positions. Had three candidates for final candidates. First candidate found, was scooped up by someone else before we could finish the paperwork and we filled the other two positions, and that was fairly rapidly, that was within a month. So it's depending upon the position. The more skilled positions, such as linemen, can be challenging when, when we have to recruit for those positions. But again, the, the open lineman position we have right now, we're holding for that apprentice to finish his program here shortly.
So would it be safe to say that overall, our situation here isn't anything out of the ordinary then as far as people are leaving the city and filling positions? Not, I, I mean, it, it sounds as though this isn't a, anything that is a serious situation for us.
Well, I can't speak for the other departments, and I'm not going to speak for the other departments.
No, I meant-
But just, just from Public Works' perspective, it's, it's terrifying when staff leave. We've had a number of staff leave for career advancement.
Sure.
Where they've moved into management positions, which speaks well to the city, that we hire good people and then train them up, and then they get scooped up by other agencies. Other ones that, that move for career advancement.
Sure.
But I, we spend a substantial amount of time filling in positions within, within at least my department. It's, myself, Ben, and Mira, we're all on each other's speed dial, and like with the rest of society, the great resignation is coming to Public Works, and it's going to come into a crashing wave within the next 60 months. So my focus, since really I started here with support of the city administrator, has really been on developing our internal house candidate, and hopefully they'll be here when that great resignation happens, to move into those positions. So it's been, it's been a constant, it's been a constant challenge. We're constantly comparing ourselves to other agencies. We're constantly comparing benefit packages. The employees are constantly comparing benefit packages, and we hear about it. We hear about it when other agencies get other holidays, or their healthcare packages change, or when there's rumblings about the pension adjustments, and staff pays a lot more attention to that than I think any of us really want to admit freely.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. I guess the next question is, is sort of as an overview, as far as retirements and staffing, looking over the next two or three years, I know that we've had a number of retirements across the city. Are we looking at that to continue? Just an overview on that might be helpful as well.
Yeah, I don't know if Ben has the information, but I provided you all at the November strategic planning, just looking at quick numbers, there was, I can't remember off the top of my head, but like 20% that could walk out the door tomorrow, and that's as a retirement. Not, that doesn't include anybody who might leave to go work somewhere else. You know, we have a police officer leaving us this week to go to another agency. So the next, the next, I would say, Rich says 60 months, I would say your next 24 months, you could see significant turnover because we're just, we're at that point. So it's, it's a lot.
Sure.
But I can certainly give you more detailed information.
I, I just wanted to get a feel for it, and I, you provided that. So in a lot of ways, we're not any, any different than the private sector than, that people are looking for opportunities to advance themselves, and, and sometimes your best people are those people that are going to move along, and how we develop bench strength, I think, is even more critical over the next five years, and, and when we have an opportunity to give people responsibility, I think that's going to be, be important. And that's probably a discussion for strategic planning, but obviously, personnel and salaries is a big part of our budget, and keeping good people is critical. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kocserog?
I do have some questions, but if I could just pick up a little bit on Alderman Kilberg's questions there. Stephanie, I guess, I don't know if this is appropriate, but do you believe in this great resignation? Do you think that's going to happen, and how do you feel the city is prepared for that?
I don't know that it's, whether it's going to happen or we believe in it. I think it is happening. It just may not have hit the city yet. What I was referring to with Alderman Kilberg is just looking at a normal year, in normal retirement age, and all things status quo, we have a wave coming, and that's, that's, that's a, that's a known fact. Factor in everything else that's going on, people liking different work lifestyles, liking to be able to remote work. Unfortunately, many of the jobs in the city are not geared towards remote work. I can't have, you know, police and firefighters working from home, or snowplow drivers working from home, so, you know, I don't know if the great resignation is a good term, but I definitely think we are seeing changes in workforce and changes in, you know, municipal government is not necessarily where everybody wants to be anymore, so I think, I think we have our, I think Ben and Mira have their work cut out for them in the next few years.
Okay, great. Thanks for commenting on that. I did have some questions. The Garden Club Park for $150,000. I know we don't have anybody from the park district here tonight, but could you tell us about that? That seems like a big chunk of change.
Well, actually, so if you're all familiar, Garden Park is the park that is located right adjacent to the river, right off of River Lane. So you have River Park, and Garden Park is that smaller park. It was, it was built, I think, or put together by the Garden Park Club many years ago, and then the city has ownership, and we entered into an agreement with the park district so that they maintain it and take care of, care of it. What they want to do is really exciting, and they've been working for a couple of years with the Garden Club group. They kind of want to open the view to the river. Right now, when you go to that park, you don't see the river, and that's probably the best feature of that park, so they want to clean out some of the, the brush and some of the older, when I say older trees, I'm talking scrub trees. They want to keep some of the birch, the river birch, and some of the beautiful trees, but they want to create more of a gathering place, more of a seating area with a view towards the river, as opposed to the way it is now, it views towards the parking lot. So it's a complete, I would say, reimagination, re-overhaul, and it's super exciting. They, they've gotten some plans and got some cost estimates, so what they're asking is the city to just partner 50%. They will get some ongoing funding from the Garden Club themselves, because they're also very invested in this property, so.
Okay. Is this, I guess, call me a newbie on this one, is this normal for us to, to spend? I understand we have a partnership, we own the land.
Yeah, it's our, it's our park.
Yeah, it's our park, but- But is it, do we normally outlay that type of?
We do all kinds of capital improvement projects, whether it be streetscape, whether it be landscape. So, the difference is, is that many of our parks that we've owned in the past, we've actually just transferred to the Park District and given them full responsibility. This one, I don't, I don't remember what the thought process was, but we do have a long-term 50-year, I think, IGA with the Park District that's renewable, because I don't think the city at the time wanted to just give them full reign of this park. So I don't, I don't think it's completely unusual. There's a lot of times we partner with various, various other government agencies to do projects.
Okay, great. The, I guess, the American Rescue Plan funds, the $2.9 million. Could you talk a little bit more about maybe, I felt like it was kind of brief on the presentation? Obviously, that's great. And I know we talked a little bit about the strategic planning, but maybe talk about how we plan on using that money a little bit more.
So, so right now, like I said, the final guidelines just came out January 6th. Today is January 24th. So before we made any grand plans or grand suggestions to the council of how to expend those funds, we wanted to make sure we understood what we're allowed to do with those funds, so that we don't end up in a situation that we spend them on one project, and then all of a sudden, when the audit happens, we find out that wasn't an allowable expense, and we have to pay those back. So what we had talked about at strategic planning is basically four buckets. I think it was about $700,000 towards lead line replacement, because we know we need to, that's an important health and safety issue, and we need to get that moving. We talked about programming about $1 million towards facility needs, cities' facility needs. Another $700,000, which we programmed for next year for storm, stormwater drainage. We know we've been doing the citywide stormwater watershed study. Is that the right term? So we've, we've looked at funding some of those projects. And then the remainder, there's about, I think, $500,000 left that we were looking at potentially doing either grant programs or something to improve some of the infrastructure in our downtown area. It's starting to get a little dated. It's been 20 years since, since the downtown was, was kind of created with that streetscape. But again, we don't have anything solidified. That would be discussions we would be having with the council once we know what those guidelines are and how we can actually use those funds. And we would be having those discussions with you all to program either still this year or next year. Again, I don't feel like there's a rush, because we have until December of 2024 to get them budgeted, and we have until 2026 to actually expend the funds. So I think it's a good time for us to do some mindful planning activities and making sure that we're really putting the money where it would have the most impact.
Great. Seems like that's going to be a huge help for the city and bring out some much-needed and exciting plans. I'm glad you mentioned the grant program, because I saw that a lot in the narrative in here as far as objectives. And I guess, I always wondered if you could tell us a little bit about what that is. Is it new? Has it been there? It sounds like it's new.
It does, yeah. It doesn't exist. It is a goal. You probably saw it a lot, because you saw it in a goal in the Finance Department, a goal in the Economic Development Department, and a goal in my department, for us to work together to create some kind of grant program. Again, right now, today, big picture, we think there's a need out there. And again, it's more to look at how we either repurpose some of these old buildings for the newer uses that we are seeing. You know, everybody wants more experiential type of, I think you've heard Kathleen talk about it all the time. They, they don't want to just shop, they want to do something. So it's looking at how we can facilitate getting, getting the right people in the right spaces and what those spaces might need. But we really, again, that's a goal that we have set, so we can sit down and be creative and think about what that looks like.
And just to be clear, though, is that grant is not necessarily related to the American Rescue Plan $500,000?
It may or may not be, but again, that all, that's why it's a goal to look at what that looks like. And then, once we figure out what it looks like, then we figure out how we fund it.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, now I guess I want to get into kind of the one subject that kind of is jumping out at me, which is the Geneva History Museum. Talked a little bit about it already tonight, but, trying to get to that page on here. But we heard the, I think, $51,000 is what you said? There were also, there was also a line item for outside services for about $8,000. Does that have anything to do with transferring the documents to the Geneva History Museum, as we discussed when?
No, none of that has been discussed. That, I think that is actually going to be a longer-term project that we probably need to look at what documents we would want to take, what that looks like, how long. So nothing has been programmed for that, or is recommended programmed for that.
So all the line item for the, I think it was program support, is either the Geneva Chamber of Commerce or the Geneva History Museum?
It's the Geneva Chamber of Commerce History Museum, or support that the city provides for the Chamber for festivals and those types of things.
Okay, so some of that, like police and things like that, will come out of there too? Okay, great. So, how much are we, you gave us the number for the Geneva History Museum, how much for the Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber, it's $153,000.
$153,000.
Again, it's three fifths of, when you look at the revenue line item, the hotel motel tax, just take that number. And that's the number we use to calculate the three fifths, the two fifths, which is now the one fifth, one fifth.
Gotcha. I don't know. I guess before I go too far into depth on, you know, this, you know, I just want to throw out there now, maybe other people can pick up on it. I have concerns about this money, this amount of money going to the Geneva History Museum and this budget. I could go into detail, but if I'm the sole person here, this alderman here, that has a concern about it, then I guess I don't need to do all that. So I guess I'd be looking for some feedback from other aldermen, if there's a reason to maybe get into that further discussion either tonight or next Monday. I do have some thoughts and some specific points on it, but again, I don't want to waste our time here if I'm alone on that. So I'd just be looking for, for some feedback, if any at all, from other aldermen on that issue. But I definitely am concerned about, about that. I guess I will say, as part of that discussion, you know, we're recovering from COVID. We took a hit on the tourism fund. That means the Chamber took a hit on the tourism fund. We recovered better, I think, than we thought we were going to there, and that's great. But now we're taking some of that and giving it away to a new entity. And that concerns me, when right now, maybe we should be concerned about, more concerned about our image and all the things that the Chamber does for us, rather, rather than taking, essentially taking money away from them. Is that a good way?
You're not actually taking any money from the Chamber, you're taking the money away from the city and its efforts in tourism. So any special projects the city would like to initiate for tourism?
Okay.
That's where the money is, is, so for example, we removed, the tourism fund was going to pay partially for some of the welcome signs. We have now moved that to a different fund.
Okay.
I talked about the market study to find out where people come to shop downtown. We're now paying for that out of the General Capital Fund, which is from a transfer from the General Fund. So that's, that's kind of, but as far as the Chamber dollars, the council's consensus was to leave them at their, and it's by agreement, so we would have to change the agreement if we wanted to change it anyhow, to leave them at their.
Three fifths.
Three fifths. Thank you.
What about other projects we discussed at strategic planning, like the French Market Pavilion and things like that? Are those put on the back burner now because of this?
No, it's still, I think the French Pavilion, I don't remember, that was a different capital fund, wasn't it? Or no, it took, we took it out? I'm sorry. Kathleen, feel free to come up and speak. I, I've got so many different budgets in my head.
I totally understand.
So, you know, I think that there are a lot of needs that could be met in the tourism fund. We have tried to apply for grants. We've got several grants out there, applications right now, because we just don't have enough money in the tourism fund to cover them all. Some of the things that we see as needs, you know, updating the streetscape, the French Market Pavilion, doing something with the courthouse kiosk. And then you always have the demand about improving wayfinding signage. You have outdated and antiquated directory signs, which, you know, could be electronic, could be, could be better. Just basic signage directing people off of Third Street onto the side streets. And then the big one is, you know, public washrooms. So you do have needs that, you know, whether it's the tourism fund or whether it gets programmed in the General Fund, but the needs definitely exceed the ability of the, that fund in particular. We've, we've, we've thought that there would be, you know, after the entrance signs are done, there'd be another big capital, another big capital. I think the thing that we put into the budget for the forecast was the courthouse kiosk. We've been chasing a grant for that for well over, we're going to submit another one for three years now. So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's other needs too.
That aren't able to be met with the current revenue and expenditures, allocated expenditures?
Right. I mean, you know, spend time talking to the, some of the stakeholders in the downtown. You know, I think that too, you know, the cities at some points proposed other mechanisms. You know, we've, there was a proposal for, you know, a business district. And that thought that, that would be, you know, taxing the visitor to try to also generate money. So there's, there's needs that we see in our forecasts for just keeping the area's vitality and, you know, the destination factor. Like I said, we've been, we've been chasing some grants. I think, I think we have a few applications out right now for different things, to try to, try to generate money that would match, that the tourism fund perhaps could match, or the General Fund, whatever the council decides.
Thank you. I mean, I think, I misunderstood exactly how the money was going to be allocated, but I think the point is the same, which is, we could make literally Geneva a physically attractive, better place to be. I'm not taking anything away from the History Museum, or the importance of history, or, or things like that. But I just, I'm sorry, it just really, I'm not seeing it right now as a post-COVID recovery where a museum is a, is a priority over, over things like what Kathleen just mentioned. I'd like to see our money spent elsewhere. And so, I'll leave it at that again, and if other people agree or disagree, please chime in. But that's it for me now. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais or remotely? Alderman Kilberg, sir, then Alderman Swanson?
With the passage of the infrastructure legislation at the federal level this year, how do we look at trying to secure some of those federal funds that probably will filter down through the state? How, are we, are we, how do we get shovel-ready so that when these funds become available, that we're the first in line? Obviously, we've got lead pipe issues as far as infrastructure. We got the sewer issue across the Fox. And, and we've got stormwater that's lurking out there as well. A big, a big price tag on stormwater that we need to address at some point in time over the next decade. What's staff's thoughts on, on preparing so that maybe we can tap into some of those federal and state dollars as it relates to infrastructure? Because I really sense that those dollars are going to start flowing pretty quickly here. And that, how do we capitalize on that? Maybe Stephanie can tackle that one.
Well, I'll just say, your, your timing is impeccable. Because just today, this evening, actually, we got an email from one of our representatives, kind of giving us a fact sheet and all the grants that will be available or anticipated to be available under this federal bill. I would note that there hasn't been a federal capital bill for quite some time. So we really haven't, that hasn't been in our, our viewpoint. But I will let Rich talk a little bit. We have been fairly successful in getting some state grants. But we are always looking for funding. We are always trying to, to leverage whatever we can leverage from outside to supplant our, our funding. But Rich, do you want to speak briefly?
My thought is, is how do we get proactive here so that, so that when the time comes and the request needs to be made, we've got the homework done so that we can be the first in line and seize the opportunity? And, I mean, there's a lot of money that's going to be flowing into the economy. And how do we, how do we seize that opportunity? I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich.
Well, there's some good news. Last Friday, we received final confirmation from IDOT that they have accepted the recertification of the Phase 1 study for the East State Street project.
Okay.
So that project will be moving into property acquisition here, probably within the next several months. And we've been getting that project shovel-ready since 2002.
Understood.
So that's probably our best shot.
We got that one ready, don't we?
I think we got that one good to go. As Stephanie has already alluded, we are putting in the final reviews on the citywide drainage basin study that looked at the city holistically and their drainage needs. So that includes capital development plan, as well as a pretty, fairly, I wouldn't say well-defined, because we don't have design documents for the needed infrastructure, but we have pretty well-fleshed-out needs. So we're setting the stage for that. We are also in the proposed budget. There is the engineering study for the river crossing, for the twin sanitary sewers. So that'll be another one. That'll be in the hopper, so to speak. And also, was it two weeks ago the survey went live, the lead service survey? So Bob's, Bob's team and the Engineering GIS Division and K-Star spent a lot of time over the winter developing a survey that's gone live with the residents to help identify lead services within the community. So in addition to our database research, as well as that survey, I think we're in pretty, pretty good shape for tackling the lead line services, the drainage issues, the roadway infrastructure. The North Couts Road Project is in its final engineering, and will probably be targeting the June 22 letting. So that'll be under construction the second half of the year. So if the infrastructure money really came up that fast, that and East State Street are probably going to be our best candidates. But then the rest of these, because the strategic plan says you want to be a data-driven organization, we have been spending a lot of time over the last several years developing that data to define the needs and put us in a good position.
Well, good. I appreciate the overview on that. And the reason I ask the question is, I think the public needs to know that a lot of these things are in a state of progress. And that when the opportunity presents itself, we're, we're not scratching our head. Obviously, we've talked about a lot of these projects that you've just referenced, and they're obviously all in various stages of development. But I, you know, I just sort of see that as a priority in that as we look at the next two to three years here, hopefully some of these will, you know, that there'll be a reward for your labors and that, that we can, we can reap some of those federal funds that, that'll be filtering back into Illinois probably pretty aggressively.
And I would also say, one that I forgot to mention was the facility assessments. Also, because you never know what, what the criteria is going to be. So we have, there's, there's a wide variety out there that we can pounce on.
Good. So, we got a lot of different ways to spend it if we get it.
We're, we're pretty good at spending money in Public Works. I don't know if you've seen the budget.
Thanks, Rich, for.
Just ask a follow-up to that, Southeast Master Plan, did that fall into some of that?
Kathleen's nodded her head yes, so I would say yes. Again, it depends on what the criteria of the grants are. There, there's a number of grants that Kathleen has been pursuing with economic development and the developer themselves. As a matter of fact, the city has a grant with the focus on building the substation. And so there, you don't know what. And so there, you don't know what, what the grant is gonna be eligible for until you see the grant.
Right.
And some of them are fairly straightforward, only take three years to do, like a sidewalk grant. Others are a lot more complicated, such as a development grant like that Kathleen's working through.
Thanks, Rich.
To Alderman Kilburg's point, the, the, the bill is known as IJA, I-I-J-A, and just recently, we've had conference calls with Rajah Krishnamoorthy, Congresswoman Underwood, Senator Duckworth, Senator Durbin, Senator Caston, and others, and to a person that responds as, "Yeah, you know, soon we should have all the details." There's really no clear and concise direction as how to grab your share of the 17 billion coming to Illinois. So that's the, well said. Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. We've spent a lot of time talking about expenses. Obviously, another important factor are revenues, and, and one thing I noticed in the, the summary that we had is that the sales tax revenues seem very conservative compared to what we're experiencing this year. And for example, a week ago, in our interim financial packet, we received an update that estimated sales tax to be 6.2 to 6.4 million, yet in our packet for the budget, we're showing 5.2 as the projection for this year, and the next year, and the next year. So my question is, why are we considering, number one, that sales tax revenue will decrease? And what is, are we just being ultra-conservative? Is, and I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so I'll speak a little bit to this, and if Rita wants to add, she's more than welcome to join me at the podium. We tend to be ultra-conservative, so I will say that first and foremost, because again, because you cannot make your expenditures unless you have revenue, we don't want to be in a situation where we have over-forecasted our revenue, so then we end up with a bunch of projects and things that we cannot accomplish because we don't have that corresponding revenue. Having said that, part of the reason we are being conservative in this next year with the sales tax is, is we don't know really what it's all doing. There was a new law that came into effect and became effective January 1 of 2021, which is the Marketplace Fair, the Mark.
Marketplace Fairness Act.
Marketplace Fairness Act, which essentially means that all the stuff that you're buying online, now a part of the local sales tax comes back to the local municipality. That did not, used to be the case. Amazon was doing it for a long time, willfully and on its own, but now other retailers are required to do that as well. So we're trying to see how that really is playing out, because with that, it also changed on who gets the revenue. Some, some of it is destination-based, some of it is purchase-based, and so we, we just really wanna feel it out before we rely too heavily on it. But certainly, it's the council's prerogative. If they wanna see that revenue number different in the budget, we can up it. Anytime we take in more revenue than we expense out, it ultimately ends up in the fund balance. And then that ultimately becomes money that we can use for long-term, long-range planning or, or larger projects.
Or reserves.
Or reserves. Exactly. Rainy day fund.
And, and the other line item that I noticed was interesting was our property tax revenue is actually projected to decrease in 2023. And I wondered if that was a plan because we are no longer funding any debt service? Or if?
That one, I might have to rely on Rita, but give me a minute, or give us a minute.
Specifically, it's going from 5.595 million in 2022 projected to 5.563 in 2023.
Finance Director Rita is gonna join us and hopefully help explain.
No, it's not because of the debt service. That's in the fund that Stephanie talked about earlier, the $301,000, Fund 301, where that money's coming from. So I'll go back and take a look at that, see why it's off a little bit. I really, off the top of my head, cannot tell you why. I mean, you talk about the graph, you did pass $156,000 difference between last year and this year, or, sorry, 2022 to 2023, which was just the increase that we can typically get from PTAL, which is all we can really take. So I will have to go back to look at the projection and see, me, I possibly made an error in there. I'm not quite sure, I just don't have the details to look at it right now.
Okay. Very, very good. And then.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I was just gonna say, I will wait until I, we get the more detailed expense information tomorrow to, to come up with more, more expense questions, so thank you.
Alderman Marks, sir, then Alderwoman Ruby.
Stephanie, maybe this is possible, maybe it's not, but a lot of the capital improvements go across a bunch of different funds. Is there any place where we can see what, like every, like in total?
Yes.
I, I didn't see it, but again, I didn't get through every line item.
So there are two charts for capital improvements. One is by fund.
Right.
And one is by type.
Okay.
So if you look at the, and I don't, we're, I think we're both are only one included, both charts included in the packet.
I saw the breakdown.
So table.
I could've missed it, I could've.
But yeah, but I will also point it out to you when I send you, so that I can show you, but, but that's why we do it both ways, because things that will be used primarily, you'll see it in public works. If we have, for instance, this brush mower, if it's going to be used by the utility, then the cost is shared with the utilities.
Yeah, and that's why I was just looking at.
So that's usually the breakout that you see, and that's why I only have the fund one here in front of me, but the one that's by type, you'll see the full cost of whatever that piece of equipment is.
I only saw the fund one, that's why I was asking, but I could've missed it. I mean, it was a lot to go through quickly. Thank you.
There's two different cuts on the same thing.
Yeah, it is. It just shows the overall cost.
Right, exactly. The, the numbers are identical, it's just how we break it out and, and display it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alderwoman Ruby. Did you ever hand up? Nope. Alderman Caven, sir. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, which, which one?
Stephanie, you were talking a little bit before with some of the additional revenue that we're gonna get from the US government and kind of like that maybe $500,000 towards some type of a grant plan for Streetscape or things like that, potentially, if, if, if that winds up playing out that way. We do have other grant programs that people on an annual basis submit money for. I realize that we're not talking about Streetscape, I know this is something different, but what are some of the other organizations that regularly apply for grants that we, that we give out? Isn't, is, is there nothing?
We used to have various grants. We used to have like a facade grant program. We no longer have that. That was part of the Downtown Business District when that was in place, but.
I thought there was something for some of the different not-for-profit organizations or things like that.
So the Mental Health Board, it's done by levy. It is spelled out by state statute, and we passed a referendum, so they get their funding from our property tax levy. The only ones that if you wanna call are, are city committees, so they're not outside organizations. There are no other outside organizations that we provide funding to, other than the Chamber right now, and next year, the History Museum as the budget is presented.
Okay.
And if I may backtrack for one second, Alderman Marks?
Yes.
In the packet, if you look on page 98 of the packet, that'll start the capital projects that are by type of project as opposed to by fund.
Oh. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Sorry. Back to you.
No problem. I know there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of numbers and information flying around here, so. Well, I, I just wanted to bring this up because Alderman Kosi Rogue brought this up specifically and inquired if there was anybody else who, who had any other thoughts. I think that that amount for, on an annual basis to the museum, I, I think is, I think is, is, is more than what it should be. I mean, if our Chamber of Commerce gets 153 a year, and this is gonna be 51, so they're roughly getting 33% of the overall total that the Chamber of Commerce gets. I know a lot of the other things that you itemized, the downtown area, you know, the French Pavilion, and on and on, and so on and so forth. To me, that seems, that seems a little bit much, even just looking at the percentage based off of what the Chamber does receive. I believe when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about visitors, visitors to the museum, and I believe that the annual amount of visitors was like 10,000. And I believe it was stated that like 1,800 of them actually visit over the Christmas Walk. So if you remove, if you remove that weekend from, from the, the total amount of visitors, with that amount, that comes to about $6.20 per visitor that the city is, is, is giving to the History Center for every additional visitor, for, for every of the 8,200 visitors they have, it's $6.20 per person. When looking at the different festivals and the different things that we have and the, I mean, I don't know how many tens are, you know, with, with all of our festivals combined. I mean, I think if there was additional funds that, that would be allocated to getting the most potential people to Geneva, and I believe it was also said that in order to give money out of that fund, it was supposed to be something that actually brings people here specifically for that reason, to stay in those hotels, those hotels and motels. So I, I, I don't know how many people that is. I definitely think that it's, it's, it's worthwhile to provide some funding, but that is an amount that I think is probably too high, and I bring that up because Alderman Kosi Rogue specifically posed that question. I know this is, there's a, how many hundreds of pages of stuff over here, but I at least wanted to respond since he brought it up. Thank you.
Could I just make a quick comment on, on his? I think also on that 10,000, we technically should take off student visits. Is there not ones that are contributing to our local economy and things like that? So I think that 10,000 included everybody, including those, those trends. Thank you.
Alderman, Mayor, did you have your hand up? Yes, then Alderwoman Ruby.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple questions, and I do want to address Alderman Kosarog's comments about the History Museum. The, Stephanie, this is for you. I noticed that the bridge, the bridge railing study or design study is in here for $85,000. Next to it, I don't see any 2024 expenditure to replace or repair the railing on the bridge. Is that, is that somewhere else in the budget then for '24?
No, I, uh, once we have the cost for the, for the engineering and what it would cost, then we would, then we would program that next year. So keep in mind that fiscal year '24, we're trying to project what we're gonna spend, but there's gonna be changes throughout the year. But it is still, we're not gonna do the work, we're not gonna do the study and then not do the work necessarily.
And I noticed that the facility improvements in the capital projects that are just general building improvements are scheduled for about $350,000 worth of budget right now. Is that?
Yeah, so what, what we did.
Plus some other projects.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. What we did, because we know there's still a lot of discussion that needs to be had, and we need to formulate kind of what our next steps are, in the meantime, there, we know that we need to repair the generator or get a new generator at the Police Department, and we know that we need to address the ADA accessibility in this building with the lift. So you'll see those are scheduled separately in the, in the schedule. And then we put $350,000 to basically address needs that, that will have to be done regardless of what we do in the future. So if we have, I'm trying to think of a, but, you know, an air conditioning go out or a heater exchange go out or whatever, we have, basically, we've put money aside knowing that we have needs, and once I get through all the spreadsheets from, that we got from the facilities assessment, there are some just regular maintenance things we knew, some capital expenditures that have to be done regardless if we stay or if we go. So that's really just, it was just a ballpark dollar. If we find we need more money, we would come back to the City Council and say we need to make a budget amendment, and this is why. But it was really just to make sure that we had some funding in there to address those issues.
Okay, understood. Is the replacement of the wheelchair lift planned to be in kind, or are we doing a design change to that?
We have, we are getting a proposal that kinda gives us some options. So I, I'm not sure if I understood your question, but yeah, I don't know that it'll be in kind. It may be a ramp, it may be a different kind of lift, it may be outside the building, it may be inside the building. We are, we are investigating that as we, as we, or kind of as we sit here. Not necessarily right tonight, but certainly we are in progress with that.
All I have for right now, I, I do think that the $51,000, considering what Kathleen said, and, you know, when staff is telling us that there's needs that aren't gonna be met, that, that concerns me. I see things in the general fund that would normally have been in the Tourism Fund, I believe, and I, I think reducing the amount to the History Museum to start would be a good idea. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. Just a quick comment on the History Museum. I, I still support the, the original proposal that we discussed, and, you know, by following Gabe's math, $6 per visitor, I, I recall during, when the History Museum, when Ms. Emma was here, I think it was like 85 or 90% of their visitors are from out of town, so if, you know, if the city is investing $6 in, in each person who's coming from out of town, I think there's a very good chance that they are spending much more than $6 in Geneva. If they're at our History Museum, they're, they're shopping and/or eating also. I, I feel very confident, that's a safe assumption. I, I just, I, I just think it's a, a good investment. I think that the value that they provide to our city is tremendous, and we, we've already discussed all the details. I just wanted to point out the, the money issue real quick. Thank you.
Alderwoman Burghardt?
Thanks. Another big ticket item I wanted to talk about or ask about, the SEP substation and feeders. Was that coming from the Electric Fund or the General Fund?
Yeah, so no, that's, that would be in the electric utility. They're still working through the design. We do have a grant that we received from the state for part of that, and then likely we would need to bond for the remainder cost of that, but it is an electric utility expense.
And what would the timeline be? Is that a multi-year?
I don't know if that's Rich or Kathleen, who wants to talk timeline? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Do you guys just do rock, paper, scissors, see who had to answer that?
Both of them are looking down.
Both of them, I know.
We have been working to have a filing of annexation from a developer that is, you know, primary SEP developer, that they own over 200 acres. They did submit a partial submittal in December, and we're working with them to make sure that they have everything submitted, so the project is looking to kick off. And then there are other landowners. There's a landowner that also wants to annex in, along Fabian, that we're on, we've been talking with them, and we've been drafting an annexation agreement for, for a couple months with them. And then we have another large property owner, BEI, who did have momentum with a developer a few months ago and continue to talk about annexation. So my understanding is that that project will be mobilized as soon as actually somebody files their, their paperwork, and it's kind of see who's going to be first with their annexation.
Okay, good news. And that, I mean, the substation is just a huge part of getting that ready to, to.
Right.
The infrastructure that's needed to make this whole project a reality.
Right, and it has the longest calendar timing for when it has to be kicked off with respect to the relationship to when construction can occur because of all of the intricate design and equipment, and like Stephanie mentioned earlier, the back. the intricate design and equipment, and like Stephanie mentioned earlier, the backlogs with, so that's probably the first, the furthest out issue that will have to be addressed, which is why it's budgeted for this year.
Very good. All right, thank you. Oh, I guess another one, fuel dispensing system I'd seen. I know that was only 20,000, but.
Well, actually, it's across multiple funds.
Okay.
So I will let Nate tell us a little bit about that.
So our fuel dispensing system is roughly 20, it was, it was put in in 1998. It consists of two 10,000-gallon underground storage tanks. We are looking at, or actually, we have been informed by multiple vendors that they will no longer support our software. It's actually a DOS-based program, so we have to actually tweak the computer.
It's actually a DOS-based?
It is a DOS-based program. It is that old.
Oh, my God.
So it is.
So did the index cards fail?
Well, yeah, man.
Oh, my Lord.
Obviously, our emergency services count on that quite a bit.
Yes.
So we have had some issues there where the, the system has failed on us, and we have had to go into emergency action plans to, you know, find alternative sources of fuel for them. But this would include replacing that particular system, replacing that computer, the software, the hardware. Also, look at potential alternatives of bringing those tanks up out of the ground into secondary containment, above-ground tanks, kind of reducing our load with the fire marshal for testing, annual required testing every year, those kind of things. So that's encompassing a lot of different things for that system.
What does the software and everything do? Does it help you maximize, I'm really dummy on this one, so tell me what. How does this whole system work?
So it provides multiple reports for us. We can do miles per gallon, we can, it obviously tracks who, who pumps gas, how much gas they pump, what vehicle it went into, those kind of things. It also helps for our card system, so you actually have to physically have a key that you plug in. It asks you for your user ID, your password, actually, the mileage on the vehicles, so that actually talks to the fleet maintenance software and helps those guys with, you know, where we're at for mileage for oil changes, those kind of things. So there's a lot involved in that software, but it is a royal pain to put it all together and put somebody new into it. It's, it's a nightmare.
Sounds like, do you have like a dot matrix printer when it?
Honestly, yes, we do. It's underneath, it prints out exactly, you know, who, who, who got fuel. So, yeah.
That sounds like a much-needed investment, for sure.
It is definitely something that is needed to upgrade.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno, you look very comfortable. Do you have any comments or? So when Alderman Bruno fills up his Prius, does that record exactly?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, man.
I fill it up so seldom that I have to think about where the gas tank is.
Alderman Bruno, you look a lot like Burl Ives tonight. Let me just say that for the record. You look nice. Sing silver and gold for us. Anyone else, questions, comments? Is it the will of this committee that we continue our discussions on the 31st, or would you prefer to wait to see about the volume of questions asked once the additional documents provided tomorrow? I'll simply defer to your preference, but. Enthusiasm over the budget.
No, no, clarify what you're, say, are you saying, should we decide tonight if we're meeting a week from tonight?
Yeah, we held the 31st as a meeting. Otherwise, do you wish to just wait to see what kind of questions are generated based on the additional information provided tomorrow? And we can certainly do that. It's still, it's still a placeholder on Monday night, and if, you know, we can take a survey again later in the week. It's up to you guys. Okay, we'll take a. Yes, sir.
Based on the questions and obviously, if we met on the 31st, that would mean that staff would probably have to be with us again for that meeting. I just don't, I don't see a need really to be here next Monday night to continue the discussion.
Ladies and gentlemen, any additional questions or comments for tonight? Alderwoman.
But if, if we decide, or maybe take a straw poll.
Yeah, we could, we could check in later.
And if I may, if there are specific questions that only involve specific funds, then all of staff would not have to be here. We would make sure, ideally, I would know what the questions kind of are about so that I could have the appropriate staff available. Listening to tonight's discussion, if the History Museum funding is still in flux as to the amount either tonight or next Monday, I would need a motion so that we know what to present for that budget that we would be presenting on the 7th. So that's, that's the only thing that I see that, I don't know that I heard enough to change it, but I can't do that without a motion by this council. So again, I think if we want to meet on Monday or not want to meet on Monday, if we do meet, as long as I know kind of the general direction of the questions, then I would know which appropriate staff to have available, or staff can attend virtually.
At least at this point in time, I'd say to leave the 51,000 for the History Museum in the budget and bring it forward then on the 7th. Maybe it might be worthwhile just to at least get a feel for the council on it so that you, you have direction. Would you appreciate that? Okay.
Bruno concurs with Kilburg.
I do as well.
I'll agree as well.
Does anyone disagree with that suggestion without casting a formal vote, unless you wish to make a motion? Does anyone disagree with that suggestion?
I didn't really understand it.
Alderman Kilburg's recommendation was that we put the placeholder in the budget for the February 7 consideration at the 20% and estimate it at $51,000.
And then we just leave it? It's not up, open for discussion anymore?
It's absolutely open for discussion.
But we would talk about it on the 7th?
Correct, if you so choose.
If we so choose.
And any and every item, every line item on the 142 pages can be discussed, exactly.
Yeah, we would just need motions on that evening.
I just don't see that we're going to have any, I don't see where we're going to have anything additional to add next Monday night as it relates to this. If there are any thoughts or questions or opinions on it, I think we can handle those on the 7th. That's all I've got.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure if that was a thumbs up or the middle finger from Cavan, but I think.
You don't have your glasses on, you don't know. That's why, that's why I knew I could do it.
But I do want to thank you for wearing the bright shirt, because I know who you are. Anyone else? If not, new business, public comment? Anyone joining us remotely, ladies and gentlemen? No?
Just sue, sir.
I know I've been fawning over this, but the, the situation was driving me crazy, so I'm just so happy. I want to thank Kathleen Tomashenko, Director Tomashenko, for working with the Little Owl on getting that little display or facade decal or whatever up on the boarded-up thing. I already thanked her earlier tonight, but great job there. I think it's a huge improvement how that looks. Hopefully, it helps all the property better.
Is that the one, the image of you?
Am I sitting there drinking a beer on the bar?
There's been a lot of, Chief Passwell can concur, there's been a lot of accents because of that.
But thank you. I think that was great work.
Anyone else? New business about anything? A motion to adjourn would be in order. Alderwoman Burghardt makes that motion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Remote participants concur? By the glaze in their eyes, they concur?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, folks. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.